Jiffy lube located eleven sixty-one, eleven seventy-one, eleven seventy-three to eleven seventy-five Ridge Road and nine seventy-four Jackson Road. Appicent Boller Engineering is requesting sketch plan review of three thousand square foot jiffy lube service station on proposed eight, uh, point eight-four acre parcel consisting of the above referenced addresses. Located in the MC medium intensity commercial district under the code at town of Webster. Mr. Goldman?
Good evening. If, uh, if you have any problem hearing me, I could take the mask off, but I've never heard complaints that no one can hear me. So, let me know if it's a problem. Uh, but for the record, my name is Jerry Goldman. I'm the attorney and agent, uh, for Guggenheim Development. Uh, who is looking to develop the southeast corner of Ridge Road and Jackson Road into a jiffy lube location. With us this evening are John Marth from Guggenheim Development to my immediate left. And the project engineer is Chris Boyer from Bowler Engineering. Um, again, we're, we're here this evening on a concept review. And our concept review this evening is to essentially subdivide the immediate corner for, uh, for this jiffy lube location. This is part of the property which is, um, owned by Ridge Road Webster LLC. The remainder of the property is going to be in, uh, as shown here. There is a house which is on the Jackson Road frontage which is going to stay. There are two houses here which are going to disappear, two lots that are along the Ridge Road frontage. With a little bit of adjustment of lot lines, uh, comprises the, uh, comprises the jiffy lube parcel. That parcel is slightly less than forty-five thousand square feet which is required in the MC district. And for that reason, we will need an area variance for that. In addition, I'm just gonna hold on to the microphone. And in addition, um, we will be applying for a use variance to allow the use as a jiffy lube at this particular corner. It's deemed to be an automotive type use which is not a permitted use in the MC district. However, there really is something very nice about this particular use on this corner. And that is that the jiffy lube, the jiffy lube operation is a traffic, um, is a traffic desert if you will. There's no intensity of traffic on the site. The average number of cars, uh, that are utilizing the jiffy lube facility typically is between thirty to thirty-five a day. As opposed to if this were a standard MC use, it could be thirty to thirty-five cars per hour. And that is really the benefit of this particular use at this location. So, jiffy lube itself, uh, is made inroads into the Rochester market with their newest, uh, development. It's actually a multi-car center. Um, there is a location in Henrietta which is in, um, an out parcel in front of the Regal Theater. There is a site which is, I believe, a smaller site than this one in the town of Arondacloy, um, along the, along the Ridge Road area. Uh, this particular site is their state of the art facility. The one thing that is, I think, very good from a Ridge Road perspective is that the building, the loading is going, um, east-west along here. So, to that extent, the building facade and building frontage along Ridge Road is solid. Uh, there are no garage doors which are, uh, which are shown. Um, as we go through the full site plan approval, we'll be talking about treatment along the area. But as you can see, we have a very large amount of green space on this particular site. We are, uh, we have ample room, uh, to be able to do, uh, what we need to do on the site. Access to the site will be from a cur, two curb cuts, one on Ridge Road and one on Jackson Road. Which also is a substantial benefit from the existing condition, which had multiple curb cuts on Ridge Road. And I believe it may have had, it has at least one, um, in, uh, on Jackson Road. So, to that extent, uh, we are doing our part, uh, to benefit traffic. And of course, we know as we go forward, uh, we will have to have the review of Modern County Department of Transportation, Jackson Road being a county road. Ridge Road, of course, being a state road. We have New York State DOT. That will be a part of this. Um, as, as we indicated, and as you've had in your packets and with the application material, we had some early design on our elevations. We know, um, we know the town's design guidelines are looking for something a little bit different. We're gonna be working on that to try to get it done. But the typical building would have a wings coat, um, a lower level, uh, which has a particular architectural design. And then the upper level, um, would also, uh, be somewhat different. We're talking about darker earth tones on the site, uh, cause we think that's in keeping with the development which has occurred, um, along the Ridge Road corridor. Brick is being heavily considered, uh, relative to this. And we'll be prepared to discuss that further when we come back, um, for a formal site planner, formal site plan approval. Assuming that we get the variance from the, uh, variances from the zoning board of appeals. So, part of our objective here this evening is to gather any input, uh, that we can get from the board relative to the concept. And also, we would request that the board, um, give a favorable recommendation, uh, for this use. Uh, as one which is essentially consistent with a lot of the uses along this part of Ridge Road. The Royal Power Wash, there is also an automotive facility which is further down across the street on Ridge Road just before we hit the village. Um, but the key element of all of that is the fact that I think it's everyone's desire that we have a low traffic generator on any of these intersections. And that really was the key to what we are doing on the site. Um, I don't know if John or Chris have anything to add before we open it up to any comments or questions that the board may have.
Just one question, Jerry. You, you, you needed a variance. What was the use variance? And the other was, what was the other one for?
We have an area variance because our lot, it, the MC district of course is a forty-five thousand square foot lot. We have a lot which is somewhat in the high thirties. I don't recall exactly what the number is. I think it's thirty-four, thirty-four thousand or thereabout. And the reason why is because we have the residential house that exists over here. With the existing building that's here. So, as a practical matter, we're kind of boxed in in terms of what this lot size is. But again, we are not skipping by any means because of the amount of green space that we have on the site. It's not like we are shoehorning anything in. Uh, typically, uh, we, uh, we see these jiffy lubes on a lot smaller parcel than, than the parcel we're talking about here.
Can you imagine something about sign guidelines?
Design guidelines.
Oh, design, I'm sorry.
We ultimately will be coming back to the board with sign guidelines. We do show some on the, on the draft elevations that we submitted with the application. Um, and we'll be doing, we'll be doing an analysis. We'll be doing an analysis of, of whether it totally conforms with code or whether it needs any relief or any variances. But, uh, we'll be taking a more critical look at that as we move on to the next, uh, next stage.
That was the point that I was gonna bring up tonight is I just thought that there's an awful lot of signs. Again, I hate to seem like Mr. Sign Guy tonight, but it seems like an awful lot of signs for one building. Especially when you're talking about the front elevation. You got the jiffy lube and then you've got Penzoil which I don't know if that would be considered another, a separate sign or not. So, it's just something that, uh-
And that's, and that's up the overview. I, I don't know if the measurement of the sign constitutes a box around the entire elements or whether each piece of it are. I believe that the code talks about, uh, you know, talks about it. We may need, uh, a variance for second elevation. Um, we are talking about, we are talking about a monument as well which is permitted under the, uh, under the code. So, that will be coming back as part of the site plan, uh, site plan application, site plan review. So, thanks for that comment, Mark.
What, what's the code say? You have to have forty-five thousand square feet. Was that a number? Forty-five? And what have you got, Jerry? Thirty?
Thirty... Thirty-four, nine, thirty-six.
Thirty-five.
But we're really boxed in. There's really not much we can do because we're gonna need a side setback variance over here for the house. And this building is very, is very close in that location.
And that drawing right where you had your finger, uh, go, go to the south, uh, go to the south of the property. Now go, go back to the west where the property line is there. There's like a jog in it. Yeah, right, right, your property line. Yeah, there's a, what am I looking at there?
Um, I'm not sure, do you wanna, do you wanna address that? It, it sounds like it may have something to do with this easement shed, uh, with the shed. Trying to, there's an existing shed which exists over here. We're, we're trying not to disturb the remainder of the property and that's what's really causing the, uh, that's what's really causing what we're doing.
That little shed that's on the, it's, it's on the easement there, isn't it?
I'm not sure exactly where the sewer line is within the easement. We, we show a center line, but I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where it is. I, I trust that the shed is not sitting on the easement, but that's something that I think we'll probably figure out as we, as we move forward.
Well, the easement is the whole width though, right?
Yeah. The easement is the whole width.
Yeah.
But if the shed pre-existed, I, I really don't know when that sewer easement came in and, and for what purpose. I'm not sure what was there first. Yeah.
What kind of a shed is it? Is it, is it some? I mean, is it a good shed or? What I'm getting at is in other words, just to minimize your variance, if you could move that, it looks like it's probably about five foot that jog maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Four point, four point three.
What is it?
Four point three.
That's a good guess.
Dimension. You're very good.
So, if you moved it up and you got another four foot by the length of that, which is, you'd have another five hundred, you'd almost be, you know, you're, you're a whole lot closer to what you... Somewhat closer anyways to what your required square footage would be. You know, you're minimizing it anyways.
Yep. We understand that.
I don't know how important the shed is if it's just, you know, well, it's a- Yeah.
For the record, sorry, for the record, my name is John Marth, Guggenheim Development. Sorry. Um, yes, I think really it was just as simple as that's part of the retained lot. We saw that the shed was there in existence today. So, we were just trying to put a small jog on the property line to sort of honor and give that shed a little bit of space off of the new property line. That was really the only intention there, I think, so, um...
That's something that we can explore and take a look. We would have to ask the existing property owner, uh, you know, what, what his feeling is relative to that. And, you know, we could try to, we could, we could try to work with that and see if we can come up with, with something. But if we have another five thousand square feet, we're still just shy of forty, so we would be in a variance situation in any event.
I'm surprised they didn't have the shed further south, you know, not on the easement area, but-
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm not sure, I'm not sure who showed up first. I'm not sure if the shed was there first or was the easement was there first. From the looks of the site, it looks like almost everything was there before anything else was there.
Well, anyways, um, there was, what was there? There was a comment in there about the, uh... There is no high intensity use to that area. Jackson Road, oh no, highway, there it is. The island cannot stick out into the right of way, so you got that, right?
We will, we will design, and I want to thank Josh who shared with us the DRC comments. Looks like there were three comments. That was one of them. Uh, we certainly can address that and keep it out of the right of way. Um, and, and take care of that. The other two were technical. They sounded more technical than, uh, than something that the board can consider.
Yeah, yeah, correct. Yep.
So, the ingress and regress going onto Jackson Road?
Yes.
Is there any way to do something like what's on Ridge? The reason I say that is I go down that street all the time and to have a car come out, turn left going south, it's always a killer amount of traffic there.
Yep.
Um, is there any restrictions? Why, you, you understand what I'm saying?
We're, we're anticipating, well, certainly again, we would have to review with county DOT because it's there and, and, and near the intersection. But part of the issue is if you wanna travel south on Jackson, okay, coming out of here. Your other alternative would be to come out to Ridge. We're basically looking to restrict what turns out. I, I don't know how you'd get there, you know?
Yeah, you can't get left. You have to go around the block.
Even if you, well, you'd have to go up here and down, you know, down and around and everything else. And again, for thirty, again, for thirty-five cars a day, I don't know how many cars we're gonna have, uh, that are gonna be, that are gonna be coming.
Okay, alright. So, do you have a board that has the existing site on it? Is it?
There's it on the back of the post.
This is the front, four of what?
So, you're kinda looking at them side by side. What I'm trying to do is it-
Side by side.
Cause on your existing site, you got the three parcels shown. And the two, the two frame house that's on, uh, now is this lot number two? Right now, you're showing on that that house has a thirty-three foot setback from the side property line. And then the lot that, the house that's on lot fifty-two, that has a, it looks like thirty-one, thirty-four foot setback from its north property line. And with your re-subdivision and how you're combining the lots and recreating the lot for this thing, now you're creating an existing lot that has an eight point three foot setback for an existing structure on Ridge Road. And then it's, I don't see the distance offhand for the dwelling that's on Jackson Road. With this subdivision, are you gonna have to seek variances for those existing houses?
Yeah, I, I mentioned that we were gonna seek a side setback variance for this house.
What about the one on Ridge Road?
Ridge Road, Ridge Road pre-exist, it's a pre-existing property line. I don't think-
Well, the property line according to the map on your, on the left there is showing that you have-
Are we moving that line?
Or that's the house you're getting rid of?
Right.
The one that does have the existing eight point three.
But this, this line, it means the same.
Yep, I'm sorry, it was off of property.
So, it's pre-existing, yeah.
Yeah. So, the variances, it's not only variances on one size and setback for the proposed development, but you're also seeking variances on the other combined lot.
One variance.
This one.
One variance. And the logic, the logic with this one in terms of, in terms of what we need over here is that the objective is to try to move this curb cut as far away from the intersection as we possibly can. Uh, again, for traffic and safety, traffic and safety reasons. This house currently is, I believe, a rental, um, which is owned by, uh, the property owner of the remainder over here. And of course, he has signed off on that, um, on that relative to, uh, relative to the site.
Now, cause we've seen a couple of different proposals for this intersection before. Um, the biggest thing always, the entrance was always that sewer easement that runs across it.
Yeah.
Every one of them always calls for the, the one lot and the one house that's remaining on Ridge Road. They always tend to show that thing as being demolished and taken away. Um, if this thing is granted, you know, setback variance for that, how would that affect a future development for that lot?
You're talking about this, this lot on the site?
Right. If you were to start turning down the buildings on there.
Well, we have, we have a fair amount of fundage along here. Uh, the remaining lot does have a fair amount of fundage. And, you know, we have, we have no sense of, of what may or may not happen. Um, you know, the issue, the issue for this property owner is that he has been unable to really get any traction with any, with any site. I, I'm familiar with, uh, with the fact that there have been prior applications, uh, for the, uh, for the overall site. And for lots of reasons, they haven't worked. But again, um, you know, the ma, the main feature is that we're taking almost an acre and we're turning it into a use that really is not generating a whole lot of traffic or a whole lot of, uh, activity.
So, it's not our board, but it's on the board. But yeah, but if they ever granted a variance specific to this type of thing, but on a future development-
Well, your point is well taken because that, that leaves just that lot and it's connecting to the other parcel to the east. Um, there's not room to put a building there. That can't be divided into, you know, separate lots. I mean, it's gonna, it, this is a self, this would be a self-created hardship by doing this. You know, for the, for the-
For future development.
Yes, for future whoever owns the rest of the property.
Well, just my, my wonder more is if we give them the variance for that and the next development comes in and tears everything down. And then, oh, we already have a variance for a deep set back for building on this property line, is that still applicable for future development?
Once, once a building goes, the setback really doesn't stick to anything.
Yeah, it has to be a foundation that would be there. Help me out. Rear elevation, side elevation, side elevation, front. What the heck am I looking at? Rear elevation, I'm assuming is-
Yes.
The second side elevation.
Is the east side?
Do you wanna flip it, Chris, to the- I, I, I can walk you through it, Mr. Chairman, real quick.
The front elevation is the, is the east side? Is that where I'm looking at it?
So, uh, this might, this might help. So, the, oh, hang on, I gotta, I actually have to orientate myself here real quick. So, these are actually, um, so this elevation here called rear elevation, I think actually might be, uh, embarrassingly, I think that's actually mislabeled.
Yeah, that's-
That rear elevation, if I'm standing on Jackson Road, if I'm standing on Jackson Road and looking at the-
That's where I'm seeing it, okay.
That's, that's what I'm seeing.
The rest falls into place.
And everything else falls into place. So, my apologies. I'll, we'll make sure to get that updated. Sorry about that.
So, that's the west, rear elevation here is the west elevation.
Correct.
Um...
And the side elevation, which one faces?
The front elevation is the entrance going into it that, which is really the east elevation.
So, the, the left, the, the second row, the one on the left is what faces Ridge Road.
Side elevation would be, uh, Ridge Road.
The first one, yes.
That's Ridge Road.
Correct.
So, that's the north elevation. And then side elevation with the ladder, obviously is the south elevation.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so, that said, the north elevation.
I'm sorry?
The north elevation, I think maybe do some homework on that thing. That really looks like the back of a building. You know what I mean? You got a window in there and it's just block. There's nothing there that's attracted, in my opinion anyways.
Okay.
You know what I mean? It just looks kinda-
That's the predominant one seen from Ridge Road.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep. We will, uh, we'll definitely take a look at making some-
You know, your front elevate, your east elevate or your west elevation, I mean, is, you know, that looks good. I mean, those doors, what are you using, different kind of doors on them or are they just kind of neat looking door?
So, these doors are, um, so they're actually a steel door with glass. So, the, the whole thing is, you know, glass panels.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's a steel door and that's mostly because of the R values that we have to get for, uh, comm check.
Uh-huh.
Uh, we prefer aluminum, but it's hard to get the insulated value. Uh, but yeah, it's all glass. Um...
You're over your doors on the west elevation?
Yes, sir.
Um, you have like little canopies over them, those red things?
Yeah, so actually, you know, this is, these guys really kinda, those are actually supposed to be, and again, I'm a little embarrassed to say this. These are actually supposed to be on the, we've, this is basically, um, these are actually signs. And again, going back to signs, they're supposed to have little, it tells the driver what, um, what service. So, like these first two are the oil change bays and then these are supposed to be different, and it's just a small white letter here. So, they didn't show that. Um, so they've got some of this stuff backwards on here.
Well, try and, I think what you need to do, I think what's gonna help is minimizing some of the signs. You don't wanna have signs over every door and window and-
Understood.
Uh, you know, all over the place. That's not gonna be too, uh, appealing to the zoning board either.
So, with the way you have it shown, the big jiffy lube and the Penzoil on it, that's actually the facade that you'll, it's mirror imaged. It's one you would see from, covered from, uh, Jackson Road.
My architect is gonna get a phone call after this meeting. But yeah, so, so the signage in totality is what we normally like, would like. Obviously, we understand that there's gonna be some reduction and some concessions made on signage. But yes, this sign package is what we typically go in with. Um, and we'll have to make some reductions here. But yeah, this, these are a little bit-
Yeah, they're, it's one you would see with the mirror image.
Correct.
And so the top one up there, because that's a west facing one, and I gotta wonder why it would even have the, it's mirror image, but the jiffy lube is actually facing east. And it makes you wonder the need for that. I guess it'd be like a, it's almost like having a monument signed by the road when you're driving down. Cause the only people that would see that would be the people on the driveway.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna retract and correct my statement yet again. This is, this is good. So, now, now it's all coming clear to me. So, this is actually, this is the front elevation. However, it's supposed to be mirrored.
It's mirror imaged.
So, this is what we call the customer side of the building. In this layout, the customer side of the building belongs over here. So, this is actually, again, I apologize to the board, we'll get this remedied, but this actually is what faces Jackson Road. This side. This is the rear of the building with those service entrances. So, when a car drives up in the back of the site, they know which bay to enter for whatever they're looking for. So, again-
They're just backwards, that's all.
Yeah, correct, so.
You're messing with us here tonight, aren't you?
Uh, believe me, I, Mr. Chairman, the last thing I'm gonna do tonight is mess with the board.
Well, I think, I think, yeah, yeah, it sounds like the board's okay with this project. But you need to fine tune, do whatever you need to do to make it work, I guess. Gotta get your variances and what have you.
Just on a site plan too, you got a monument sign that's ten feet off of Jackson Road right of way. I don't think that's gonna fly.
Where are you?
Here. On the site plan?
Yeah.
They have a proposed sign. It's a monument sign that's twenty-two feet off of Ridge Road, but it's only ten feet off of Jackson Road.
It's gotta be twenty-five.
Yeah.
Gotta be twenty-five, twenty-five.
Yeah, and then in that same area too, there's, um, you got your water service running through the middle of your proposed green space and stormwater management area. What do you envision as the stormwater management area? Is this subsurface? It's clearly not a pond that you're showing out here. Is this subsurface chambers?
Yeah, for the record, I'm Chris Boyer with Bowler Engineering. And, uh, we're very fortunate on this site from a stormwater standpoint. So, there's a lot of good things from an engineering standpoint on this site. Uh, one, it's a redevelopment site. It's got a lot of, uh, properties on there too right now. Uh, we'll be removing some of those and cleaning that up. Two, there's four lots and we're reducing the number of lots here. So, uh, lots in general are gonna get consolidated and, and sorted out better. And then three, the size development that we're trying to put here is very small. So, again, the overall lot is, uh, I think point, uh, eight-four acres. So, it's, it's small and as Jerry mentioned, a lot of green space here. So, so from a stormwater standpoint, it's redevelopment, less than an acre, and we've got a lot of green space here. So, it's not a heavy lift on this for stormwater. Uh, we're probably gonna be able to solve it all, uh, with surface, um, because of the, those credits that are here. Connection wise, uh, ultimately, it'll, it'll be a pipe that connects, uh, right now there's a drainage that comes out this way. And this is the flow of the, of the water. Uh, and so we'll maintain that flow with the design. So, tonight, you know, uh, I know your architect has put those, uh, elevations together. We just wanted to give the, the board a flair for, uh, you know, the project, you know, what's it gonna look like, scope, scale. There's a lot of detail that we'll have to get into. Uh, I know that the first challenge that we have is just, you know- Uh, I know that the first challenge that we have is just, you know, use variance. Uh, that can be scary and, uh, before we do too much and talk about, uh, oak trees or, uh, cherry trees or live oak bushes, um, you know, that's a big hurdle for us to get through is, is that use variance. But certainly, there'll be even more detail with the stormwater.
Is that sewer sanitary or is it storm? I can't remember.
It's just, uh, sanitary. It's there.
So you wouldn't be able to tie the storm into it?
There, there is a storm line here, but I think the easement that you're talking about is sanitary.
Sanitary.
Yeah.
Can we go back to the west elevation for just a moment?
Sure.
Cause I have a question. Uh, your, um, above the garage doors, is that all one color? You see what I'm talking about, the, uh...
All, all of this brick is one color here. There might be some shading in there that you're seeing, but it's not intense, uh, intentional to have a different brick that's there.
Okay, cause I've got on mine a, a, a dark red and then it looks like an orange underneath.
That's the piece we were talking about.
That's about, okay, what about the lights there? The lights look like they're pointing outward instead of down.
Those actually aren't lights, those are actually, uh, uh, is it the roof stepper here?
Oh, alright, I just, it looked like...
Scoppers on the roof.
Yeah, we actually, uh... Just a, an additional point for everyone, uh, as far as lighting goes, uh, we're basically a, a standard, what I call standard business hours typically, you know, we're a nine to five or a nine to six kind of operation, so lighting on the site, we, we put, we actually don't propose site lighting other than anything on the building for emergency and safety purposes at night, that's it. Um, so there's not really any lights that are...
For parking and stuff, you know?
Yeah, that, we, we don't because we're, we're closed during, uh, basically during nighttime hours, so... Uh, just something to point out for the board, there won't be a, a site that's lit up twenty-four hours a day here. Uh, we just, you know, we're a daytime operation predominant.
Alright. Next step is to the CBA now. That's up to the board. I, what do you guys think?
I think, I think it's a great use for that corner.
What, what's that, Dave?
I say, I think it's a great use for that corner.
Yeah, no, I got comfortable with that, yeah.
Um, you know, and, and it's gonna be, it's not a noisy thing and not a lot of traffic. Uh, we've seen so many things come in on that corner. Gas stations.
Yes.
Plazas and whatnot, restaurant type stuff. So I think it's a perfect use for that corner.
I agree. Um, so the question then, you guys wanna have a letter sent to the zoning board or you just go in the room? What do you wanna do? You tell me if, if you need, if you want the letter, I'll do a letter with Catherine.
I'd favor the letter.
Huh?
I agree.
Yeah? Yeah, you okay with that?
Yep.
Alright, well, everybody's alright.
My, my concern is that Ridge Road facing front of the building.
What's that?
Doing something a little bit more exciting on the front of the building facing Ridge Road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which, which kind of...
Yeah, make sure the ladder's in the back. We'll, we'll put the front in the front in the back. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering. What's the, what am I looking at here? I didn't wanna sound stupid, but I'm looking as, I'm trying to figure out, what's the front, what's the back here? Yeah. Alright, guys are outside, I guess, right?
Right?
Yep.
Alright, well, um, we can make a letter tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright, excellent. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, fellas, we'll see ya. Good luck.